So, welcome, everyone. Here around the table and out in the audience at home to the December 9th City Council Work Session. We're doing something that I'm -- sorry, that we're doing today, thanks to Counselor Evans asking us to do it. We're having a joint session with our Human Rights Commission, so we welcome you all from the Human Rights Commission here. And I don't think you guys are on television like we are. I think you need to introduce yourselves to the public who are watching you today. So, we go around and we'll all introduce ourselves. And I'm Kate Piercey, Mayor Eugene.
I'm Andrew Thompson. I'm the Chair of the Human Rights Commission.
I'm Chris Nunes. I'm the Vice Chair of the Human Rights Commission.
I'm Chris Pryor. I'm City Council, Ward 8.
Alan Zelenka, City Council.
Edward McLoane, Human Rights Commission.
Mike Clark, Ward 5.
Bonnie Souza, Human Rights Commission.
Don Rees, City Manager.
Ken Newbeck, Human Rights Commission.
Jennifer Frenzer-Nolte, Human Rights Commission and the Homeless Work Group.
George Brown, Eugene City Councilor, Ward 1.
Deborah Mersky, Human Rights Commission.
Betty Taylor, City Council, 1, 2.
Greg Evans, City Council, Ward 6, Vice President of Council.
So, do you imagine, were you planning on saying anything at the beginning of this before we launch it?
Oh, who's on?
Is there any man in the house?
Oh, Claire. Counselor Saret, are you there? Nope.
I didn't hear.
George?
And George Pauling is absent today. He's ill.
He's ill.
So, I think the way we're going to do this is, I'm going to ask a -- have you got a mouthful?
Slightly.
Go ahead.
No, I was going to ask you one to say something first, but I don't want to do that to you, but you have a mouthful. I will.
No, I'll defer to --
Chairs here.
To the Commission of Chairs, and I believe that Jennifer has an opening remarks.
Are you first up, Jennifer? Okay, please. Go ahead.
Well, good afternoon, and thank you very much for accepting the invitation to have this work session. Thank you, Greg, for taking the initiative, and for the rest of the Human Rights Commission who's showing up to more meetings. So, I really appreciate all that. And we're here, we're here in our role as an advisory body. We want to start a dialogue that we hope keeps going, and so that today is not the end of a conversation, but the beginning of a conversation about the human rights of a very vulnerable population in our community, the homeless. So, thank you all for spending your time with us in this way. Our community has shown its concern, its deepening concern about how best to approach assisting the unhoused members of our community. We've had two town halls over the past several weeks, and two Egan Warming Center trainings. One alone attracted 382 people, and folks returned away at the door. So, people are activated, they're leaving their homes, and going out at night, ready to roll up their sleeves to relieve suffering. And I think the call, the mayor, the mayor's initiative, and the council resolution asking the state to declare homelessness a crisis here in our town and in the state, has an impact on people, and they're responding. And these are people in our town who are seeking a more humane and efficient response to how to approach the issue of homelessness. So, they're showing up as problem solvers, ready to give, and volunteer, and put their effort into problem solving and collaborating using proven approaches that respect people's We already know that we need to be creative, and innovative, and efficient, because we don't have tons of resources in this community. We're not over, we are overflowing with volunteers, in other words, but not necessarily other resources. So, we do need to prioritize, and so we can address the issues, the crisis at hand, and meet the momentum of the community ready to help. There are different perspectives about how to approach the issue. But before shutting the door on a point of view, I believe we'll all benefit from getting outside expert advice on how other communities are approaching the many issues and aspects of homelessness that actually impact all of us as a community. So, today on the agenda, there are three topic areas, and our, the way Greg has formulated the work session, was that the areas would be addressed separately from one another. And the topic areas are consulting with legal experts in the area of homelessness is one topic. Number two is actively coordinating with other jurisdictions to increase shelter, emergency shelter capacity, and also housing capacity. And number three, officially supporting the Housing First or Supported Housing approach in Eugene. So, federal and international agencies have identified the unhoused as people in our communities who are at risk for human rights violations. And they've gone so far as to, for example, through the Housing and Urban Development grant applications, tell us as communities that we need to attend to this concern thoughtfully, and/or else risk funding. So, on a federal and an international level, we're trying to absorb what to do on a local level. And I think it does take collaborating in order to do that. Thank you again for your willingness to have a conversation, and I'm just going to see if Ken has any more comments, because he worked very hard and did a great job with the agenda summary.
Thank you. That was a wonderful overview, I think. Yeah, I think what we want to do is proceed pretty systematically, and speaking for the Commissioner, if I'm allowed to do that, we're really looking forward to a productive session. Hopefully, we can get some concrete kinds of things coming, coming out of this, but also a very open and honest discussion of what people see as the issues, and what their, what their opinions are of different things.
Did you move the mic or something?
No, a little bit further away.
Gladly. So, one of the things that we're much concerned with is, is barriers that people who are homeless may face, because often they're caught up in the criminal justice system with citations or arrests, which create a record that makes it even more difficult for them to find housing, get jobs, and even qualify for certain federal, federal programs. So, that's a problem, and that's one of the areas in which we feel would be good to bring in some outside advice, to create kind of a glide path on, on how, how we will go about addressing that. Okay? And we have ideas, obviously, and you may have ideas as to, as to what should be done, and you may have many questions. The second area is continuing the work, and hopefully escalating and ratcheting up the work, on providing emergency and transitional shelter. The work that's been done over the last couple of years by, primarily by volunteers in the community, and donors in the community, has resulted in beds for approximately 135 people. This is really not enough, given the numbers of unsheltered people who are homeless in Eugene, which is quite a bit more than, than that. And then finally, we want to address the Housing First model. I know the Lane County Poverty and Homelessness Board has been discussing this at length, and has some plans for the implementation of this, but it's dark as that the City of Eugene and the City Council really have never come out and said, "This is really something that we want to throw, throw our support behind." And it is something that's across the country being noted as an efficient, cost-saving, and humane way to proceed with regard to people, particularly chronically homeless people who may have mental health, or addiction issues, alcohol, drug issues. And we can hopefully take advantage of what's been learned elsewhere to implement that here in Eugene. So, that's just a little addition to, to the overview, and I'll stop there.
Any other, are we ready for discussion now? Is that where we are on the agenda? I wanted to know if the Chairs had anything they wanted to add to this.
Not necessarily. I just wanted to thank you all again for your time, and for having this work session. We're very happy to be here, and to spend time with you.
I wanted to, I think I caught him again.
You keep touching me a minute. No, I just wanted to say that I appreciate all the work that the Human Rights Commission and many other people who are out in the audience today have done around this issue. I know sometimes it's frustrating how slowly government moves sometimes, but we are trying to do the best that we can to do this in a more thoughtful and sensible way that we can address the issues that we face in our community around the unhoused. And so, I think this is another step in a series of things that have gone on over the last three years that I've been on Council, and maybe many more years before I became a Counselor, that I think is moving in the right direction, although sometimes it doesn't feel that way. But I think that we are moving progressively in a direction that hopefully will get us to a place where we can address the needs of the unhoused in this community.
I know we're going to be talking about the three considerations that you all asked of us that are in our, on our agenda here. But I did want to, for the sake of the public, to, to say that there are a lot of things going on in a lot of places right now. And one of the things was the mayor's challenge around housing homeless vets, we think will hit our 365, so that will be 365 people who are housed that weren't a year ago. So, that's a, that's something, that's a step. And I know that under the leadership of Jacob Box from HACSA, they're working on a Housing First facility, low barrier facility for, for chronically homeless folks, and so that's, that's in motion. It's not there yet, but it's in motion. There's also a lot of discussion, and really, I think, strong discussion now that I think everybody should know about, because we had no decision that's been made by this body, or the Poverty and Homelessness Board, or anybody else yet. But there is a, seems to me, a very high interest in adding to our shelter capacity. And there's very high interest right now in trying to set a direction and goal toward getting to a, a public shelter. So, those things are all out there in the community that you all can participate in. In our Council, I know that Counselor Pryor serves on the Housing Policy Board, and this is part of the context of building more housing capacity in our community. I know that Counselor Evans serves on the Human Rights Commission, but also serves on the Human Services Commission, so does Counselor Saret. So, we're in a lot of places having this, this discussion, and trying to, to move the ball, so to speak. And I was in a conversation last, last week with, where it was mentioned that the Governor has made, has, having received our resolution, actually, has made homelessness a priority for, for this. So, I think that's another opportunity waiting for us to, to move on. And she is, she has formed the work group, she is forming the work group that we requested, and it's going to be chaired by somebody who, who used to head up NEDCO here. Claire?
Claire Segwin.
Claire, is it Segwin?
Segwin.
Segwin, yeah.
Yes, and so, that's somebody who's familiar with our community, kind of understands us, and is going to lead this discussion at the state level. So, all of those are sort of pieces, and I bet you there's about at least a hundred other people who are here that could add more pieces to this conversation. But that doesn't mean that we're, we don't have a lot of work ahead of us. We have a lot of work ahead of us. Really, I'm going to, you want to tee up one of these at a time? Is that the, the way you'd like to do it? So, am I going to use the, the number one here, as I see it? It is the City of Eugene will seek to eliminate barriers that have unintended and negative human consequences, including making it more difficult for people who are homeless to access housing and jobs. And I just, I guess the first thing I want to know is, does anybody have any questions or comments about that topic?
Yeah, I think that this is certainly something that we need to do a lot of work on. I can recall when I, years ago, worked on strategic planning. One of the methods that we used, one of the systems was what we called STP, where you first clearly defined the situation you were in, what, what was going on. And then you created a set of targets, what, what did success look like? And then you created a set of proposals, and I think that actually all of these could benefit from a similar kind of approach. And one of the, one of the considerations is, I'm not sure that we really have a clear understanding of what the situation is, and all of its implications, because it is very complicated. And it's complicated through the fact that there's not just a single, simple process that's going on here. There's many implications and many elements. And so, I think our ability to really zero in on some effective targets, some outcomes, depends on our clear understanding. And I know that the forum that was held last week was an effort to try to get at a clearer understanding of the situation. And so, I think inherent in this one is, if there are barriers, I want to clearly understand what those barriers are, how they affect the different populations, so that we can try to not only prevent the unintended and negative human rights consequences, but can also prevent any other unintended consequences that may come as a result of the solutions we propose. So, I am very supportive of going full steam ahead with addressing this issue, but I want to do it in the most thoughtful and deliberate way, so that when we finally get to proposing targets, those targets will really be the most effective and most efficient in terms of achieving the outcome that we really want to achieve. And that way, when we get to the proposal stage, they will be the right proposals that we can not only implement with confidence, but we'll achieve those targets effectively.
Any other comments from any, yes, Counselors?
Yeah, I think as we get into this conversation, for those people that are watching this on TV, and aren't that familiar with all that's been going on, I think it bears reiteration of all the things that we've actually done. We had a four-page memo from staff listing all the things that we are doing, and I'm just going to go through them real quick, because I think it bears on this conversation, it's a good foundation. Where we're supporting human services to the tune of $1.2 million a year, in addition to what we already give for community service shelters, homeless access centers, under release services, shelter services and rapid housing like The Mission Shelter Care St. Vinnie's, Egan Warming Center, Interfaith Shelter Program, the Car Camping Program, Emergency Home Repair Program. And then we also created Opportunity Village and the Rest Stops, and Bothy College for, or Cottage for, a group home for female ex-offenders with children, and the Stellar Apartments, and the Willa Kenzie Crossing, Baskin Village, Polk Street Apartments, the Lindholm Service Station, Looking Glass New Roads, as well as our Consolidated Plan, which calls for 500 housing units of permanent housing. And then we've got our Winter Strategies, and then we've got our Housing First Project that we're working on, the Veterans Homeless Program, which has been a stellar success, and kudos to the Mayor and the City Manager for heading that up. And then homeless medical respite care. That's just a really long list of stuff that we've been doing, that's, I think, very admirable for this community. A lot of it has to do with volunteers, and we need to bolster that and keep that going. That's a great foundation for us to start with, and it's not as if we aren't doing a whole lot. We are doing a whole lot, and this is a good list of that. But everything that Chris said, I, I concur with. Just need to keep building on this and moving forward, and understanding it, it's a very complicated issue that, that bears a lot of conversation, and then action.
I'm going to go to Ken, and then back over to Counselor Clark.
So, as I understand, we're going back and forth between the
Yep.
The two groups. Okay. Yeah, I agree that there's been a lot developing and a lot going on, and all good. Not quite enough, but, but all good. But almost every one of the things that are, that's in that list has to do with housing or sheltering people, except for the last one, which has to do with, with healthcare. But still, it's sheltering, sheltering people. What this Item 1 really addresses is the legal side, the human rights side, the harm that's being done, perhaps unintentionally and inadvertently, by various ordinances and policies that disproportionately impact upon people who are homeless, because they are homeless, because they are unhoused, and they're, they're vulnerable when they engage in behaviors that they must be engaged in out of absolute necessity, their human behaviors. They have to sleep, they have to go to the bathroom, and so forth. And those are the things that I think we're really concerned with in, in this Item 1. When we get to Items 2 or 3, 2 and 3, that's where we're talking more about shelter, and we're talking more about housing. But this is the real thorny one, I think everybody will agree. We try to really focus on the concept of barriers that people face, because we don't want people to, to be adversely affected in ways that it becomes even more difficult for them to find housing, and more difficult for them to find jobs than, than it already is, given the kinds of circumstances under which they're, under which they're living. And so, that's the purpose of, of Item 1. And again, that's not to take away from the various kinds of things that, that were, that we just listed. Those things are admirable, and we need much more of that going on. But to date, the, neither the City Council, nor the Poverty and Homelessness Board, although it did a little bit on this, have really addressed this significant issue that we're being told by the U.S. Department of Justice and the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, our concerns, that they are increasingly going to be coming out into the field to try to alter the legal conditions in which people are, find themselves, and are kind of trapped in this, in this box that they can't seem to, to get out of. So, I hope that's clear.
Thank you. Counselor Clark?
Thank you, Mayor. Couple, two, three things here. Number one, I see Counselor Evans' motion, but I wonder with these three, is the end of our work session today in the process driving us towards some manner of vote today on these? Do you imagine?
As I have talked to various Council members, what I have heard is two Council members have motions in mind for today. One Council member indicates that she would rather discuss today and vote on it later. Another one says could go either way. That's pretty much what I've heard.
Well, I too would, would prefer to discuss today and vote another day, as I was hoping that this combined work session would give me, at least, I can speak only for myself, the opportunity to learn something new, that I don't know about how to move forward appropriately and, and compassionately for folks who deal with this. So, I appreciate Ken's point about the word barriers. I suppose that's a good place to start. I would be, I would appreciate knowing more about the kind of conversations that are had at Human Rights Commission around barriers, so that the Council might be better informed. That will help me, so that we might vote in a more informed way. But also, I have connected concerns, tangential concerns. Equal treatment before the law for everybody is a concern of mine. So, when you, when you begin to consider policies or laws that treat different people based on condition or something differently, I get concerned. So, I want to understand the framework that Human Rights Commission has had these kind of conversations, and the specific kinds of things that they would, they would change and alter in a perfect world. That would be most helpful for me, and then hopefully, we can do that later.
So, I'm listening to you, and I'm thinking about the best way to have the healthiest discussion here. And what I really do not want to do is, I don't want to put our Human Rights Commission in a position of deliberating with us.
Agreed.
I do want them to have a chance to talk to you all as earnestly and completely as possible. So, I am going, and I can be outvoted on this, but I'm, I am suggesting that the two motions that are out here today, what you could do is ask those to be moved forward, to be brought back at another, another meeting, and then we would not be having deliberation on motions at this meeting, when we're really having a discussion together. Are you okay with that, Counselor Evans?
I'm okay with that, if Counselor Brown's okay with it.
Are you okay with that, Counselor Brown?
Well, I, I mean, my motion specifically will, is directly related to the conversation that we're having right now.
I understand that.
And would answer many of Counselor Clark's questions. If we set this in motion, that's a way to move forward, and we learn more, if we approve them.
Could you talk about the content of it, and then we could take up the actual motion at the next meeting? Would that be a way of dealing with this, that we could do that?
You mean on Monday's meeting?
Well, I don't know what's on Mondays. We don't have
No, we don't. Yeah, we don't want to talk.
Wednesday.
We have Wednesday, right?
We're not meeting on Monday?
But we don't have.
Not?
Is there, is there a radio on Monday? What's on Monday's?
There is with both.
Yes, there is.
What is that meeting?
A Web Update, Committee Reports for the Work Session.
Just trying to, to keep us on a, I'm happy for you to discuss the content of this, because I think that's part of the discussion. I'm concerned about bringing the Council deliberation about passing motions into this Um.
It would be easier on Monday than on Wednesday.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay?
I understand that, as long as we can, we can do it on Monday.
Okay.
Yeah. We, I think we can agree on Monday.
Okay, then I'm going to leave it at that. Okay.
Just to finish, if I could, I, I agree with the Mayor, that I, I think it would be healthier for us to have a discussion here, rather than a debate over how we're going to vote. I know it would help inform me a great deal better if I can do a back and forth with questions that isn't driving towards trying to see if we can construct a vote around something. That would be very helpful to me. I would also say, just for the record, that there's at least a chance I will be intending a motion on a different subject for Monday, if that figures into the scheduling.
You'll send it out ahead of time?
I will, in fact, do that.
All right. Ed McLoane?
Thank you, Mayor. I am relatively new to the Commission, and so some of the learning that I've been doing on this is probably similar to how some councils, dealing with this question of kind of barriers, and what some consider to be criminalization of homelessness. The way that I like to think about this issue, that I find constructive, is that these issues of barriers and legal enforcement are kind of an intermediate step between people living on the streets and getting into housing. And so, while we're doing a lot of great work on housing for a number of folks, we know that the need, the need far outweigh, or exceeds, the available supply. And so, for those who are caught in that middle ground, where there's not enough supply, but the need is still there, what can we do to ensure that we're ensuring them the greatest opportunity to pursue jobs and housing in the future, and that they're not being overburdened with criminal charges or other kinds of disruptions for doing the basic needs that they have on a day-to-day basis, such as using the restroom, and eating, and sleeping, those sorts of things? And what can we do as a city to make that possible? I really appreciate Counselor Pryor's comments, and I suspect that that might kind of be a framework for potentially both of our bodies to look at, what do we need to do to create, you know, an index or something of all the different issues that are out there, that could potentially help inform work of other advisory commissions as well? Are there things on the Police Commission that perhaps need looking at? Are there things on the Sustainability Commission? You know, are we going to walk out of here with a mile-long to-do list, potentially? But that might not be the worst thing in the world. So, I appreciated that, and I appreciate the Mayor giving us the chance to have those discussions, build those to-do lists, and then come back in both of our bodies to reassess what we need to do, and how maybe our work plans change, so that we can facilitate that work, where we have a greater knowledge of what's out there, and what some of the challenges are, so then we can start to tick things off the list.
Counselor Evans?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. As far as this first issue around the legal issues that the unhoused face, face, I think that we do need to be able to avail ourselves of all resources that are available out there, for us to be able to get the information that we need in order to craft a strategy that's going to be the best outcome for, for all of us. And one of the ways that we can do that is to be able to look at some of the resources, and some of the efforts that we have had locally, that have not necessarily been coordinated. So, I point to the fact that Judge Wayne Allen, who is our leading municipal court judge, has been working on a has been working on a community court model for the last few years that I don't think has really kind of been brought into the discussion as a way for us to look at the legal issues that unhoused people face in a different way. And I think that there's some ideas there from Judge Allen and his staff and a number of other people that he's been having discussions with that need to be brought into the mix. Additionally, I think that we have underutilized our neighbors at the University of Oregon and the capacity of the Family and Human Services Division over there and a few other resources throughout the local community and state that I think could be brought to bear in terms of being able to help us shape and craft the, you know, way forward for this. So I don't want to exclude any of those options or any of those resources. And at the same token, I want to focus specifically on one resource. But I think that we need to bring in a number of different resources and a number of different efforts that are going on that may or may not be coordinated at this current time. And I bring the one up about the community court because we had a discussion about this, I want to say about three years ago when I first came on council. And that discussion kind of just kind of fell by the wayside. If some of you recall that, it has not been brought back to council for any more discussion in terms of what that specific kind of court would look like. And if I recall correctly, it had some things built in it, some initiatives built in it that could alleviate some of the issues that unhoused people are facing without having, yeah, I got that, without having the same draconian effects that maybe our municipal code has right now.
Is there another Commissioner, what's, yes, Jen. One of the, I'm hearing the request for information from Crescent, from Mike. We did the Mayor's Task Force on Homelessness. That work, I would not like that to get repeated since that was a pretty pricey workforce. And there might be some things that need to be updated in that, but we had over 50 stakeholders from the community in the room and there's a lot to glean from that. So not starting over, but starting from where we left off is something I would prefer. There's also some new resources that we could be tapping into. The U.S. Inter-Agency Council on Homelessness is a federal body and it has a Seattle office and I contacted it. Katie Miller will actually be, and the executive director will be at the West Coast Mayor's Conference. And she has offered to be a resource to our community. And also, their expert on criminalization is available to us as well. And so there's increasing amounts of resources on these topics. And it's smart to get information about what, first of all, what these terms mean, why the federal agencies are so concerned about it, what is the basis for their concern and how it applies to us here. In terms of the motion that was just passed around, I did get some information this morning from the National Law Center that they are willing to do a phone-in free consultation with us. So that might be another place to get some of these information, points of information questions answered, you know, if we could do that on a conference call sometime or have him call into a meeting.
Okay. I have Counselor Zelenka is next.
Regarding the schedule on Monday's meeting, I'm going to be available for the first part of the meeting and I'll be on by phone on the second part. So if we could defer that to the 7:30 session, that would be preferred for me. I think, Jennifer, you said that we need to be clear on these terms and I think that's true. And the one term that I think is misapplied here is criminalization. To me, and talking to other folks in the legal community, criminalization is if you end up in jail. And there's nobody in jail today for being homeless. And we don't put people in jail for being homeless. There's violations of the law that result in citations, which is where homelessness or a camping violation or any of those other things fall into. And you don't go to jail for that. And I think there are communities in the country that actually criminalize this and put people in jail for doing some of this stuff, but it's not the case here. To me, saying criminalizing homelessness would be like criminalizing speeding violations or other kinds of violations of the law, which don't result in jail time. So it's a little bit sensationalistic. I think it kind of beats the point over the head with a hammer by using it, but I think it's not the right term to be used here.
Ken?
Well, we've also talked to legal people about this. And as far as the context of punishment for things that you are, that you engage in necessarily simply for life-sustaining reasons, citations are considered a punishment in that they're a notification that you must make, that you must pay a fine. And people in this community have been fined anywhere from $200 to $1,000 for sleeping in the wrong place. A $1,000 citation's just blew me away when given to people who essentially have nothing. If you don't show up and pay these citations, you get another $100 fine and you're arrested. Okay? So this--
Nobody has been arrested for that.
No one has been arrested for not paying fines. No warrants have been issued.
Or the state attorney, nobody's been arrested for not paying their homelessness or camping violations or--
But people are arrested for, yeah, people are arrested for disobeying the no trespassing signs, which are increasingly appearing in the parks and various places where folks have traditionally slept or camped or whatever. So, you know, we can agree to disagree. We may not like the term, but the outcome of it is barriers that people are carrying around on their records, which make it more difficult for them to get jobs, get housing, to qualify for certain federal programs. There's probably a reason why it's referred to as criminalization by the international human rights bodies and by the federal government, the Department of Justice and Housing and Urban Development. We have tried to sort of, because we know from experience that some of you do not think that that's a great term, we have tried to sort of focus on the actual outcomes, which is the barriers that are posed when people are getting in trouble with the law, when they're simply just trying to survive.
So, this--
Mayor, could I get in the queue?
Pardon?
Mayor wants in the queue.
Sure.
And Mike.
I've got, already got Mike in the queue. I've got George Brown in the queue. I've got Chris Pryor, Mike Clark, and Counselor Sorette in the queue. But I wanted to say, because this is going to take us, this is something that's worth taking some time to discuss. I also want to say that I'm asking you all to refrain from debate or taking part of anybody else's turn because that just gets into this. Everybody gets their three minutes and respectfully gets listened to and that's the way I would prefer it to go so that we all feel both safe and respected in the conversation. And I'll try to go back and forth and I think you should concentrate as much as you can on asking the questions that you want answered. And I think what I've heard thus far is people are interested in this topic and trying to figure out how we get to those, understand what the barriers are and see what we can do to move forward on some of those and that we will look at those at the council level and you will look at it within the Human Rights Commission level and we'll talk about convening a larger, bringing a larger group together. That's kind of the things I've heard thus far. So, I'm going to go now. Counselor Brown, if you want to say something?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, and then I'm going to go to Counselor Pryor.
Thank you. Three quick thoughts. The first one is, when I talked about the structure before, it would be logical for people to see my asking for, you know, thoughtfulness and being deliberate to be just a very short line over to stalling and delay. And I, in no way, shape, or form, want to ever imply that what we're trying to do is figure out a way to stall and delay and drag out and kind of not do something. I think thoughtful and deliberate is good, but I am not interested at all in figuring out a way to stall or delay action. And so I want to be only as thoughtful and deliberate as we need to do, but I still want to keep moving forward. We need to achieve, we have real issues, we have real things we need to work on and we need to get something done. With that said, part of being thoughtful, and this is to what Jennifer was talking about, is I think anywhere where we can take advantage of certified smart people, we need to do that. And we also need to take advantage of past work and past resources at our avail. Well, I served on the Mayor's Commission and there was a lot of good work that was done there. And we can take advantage of that and use that as a building point. What for me is really useful in the conversation we're having today is, I don't think anybody's really going to argue around the need for shelter. We need to do more around shelter, there's more things around shelter, the Housing First model is a great one. It's not really going to be that controversial. I think figuring out ways to accelerate that will be interesting, but nobody is opposed, I think, to providing shelter for people who truly need it. So what we're really getting down to now is this incredibly thorny issue of how do we address behavior? Because behavior is kind of what we're talking about. What behaviors are we comfortable with? What behaviors are we uncomfortable with? What behaviors are necessary for survival? What behaviors are within the range of what we can work with? What are criminal, what are not criminal? And behavior is such a difficult issue because what's an acceptable behavior to you may not be an acceptable behavior to me and what is and what isn't. And that's where your certified smart people can certainly help. But also, a lot of conversation about what we are prepared and what we are not prepared to accept around the notion of behavior. I'm not going to pretend to be the expert on it, but I do think we have to figure out what is our strategy for dealing with behavior. And I think when we do that, we need to do something that doesn't involve harassing or pretext behavior. When you pull somebody over for a broken headlight, sometimes that's a pretext to check out something else. And I don't want the behavior to become a pretext for some other action that you want to do or a pretext to get rid of somebody. But if there are certain behaviors that are not acceptable, we need to continue to retain those. So I think there's a very helpful discussion we can have around what behaviors we need to keep in place and address and which ones we could really dispense with because they are just a pretext.
I'm trying to alter between the two groups. And so I'm going to ask Andrew or Chris or Bonnie, any of you have comments? You, Jennifer, have you, that we haven't heard from, have any comments that you want to make? No? No? No?
Did Jennifer?
Okay. You want to make--
Sure, I'd love to. The Eugene Police Department did approach the working group for the Human Rights Commission. And what they brought us was a flyer that they thought might help community members understand the, how they were interacting with the unsanctioned camps that were popping up in neighborhoods. And EPD was very receptive to our feedback. And one of the areas of feedback was this discussion about the term of criminalization. And why I bring it back up again, it was because they understood our feedback really clearly that trying to reframe that conversation using a legal term of art felt disingenuous about what the true barriers and impact it was having. And they took that in and said, yeah, telling people that it's not criminalization because we're talking about a misdemeanor instead of a crime does seem like we're playing a semantics game, a legal term of art. And it does seem disingenuous. And we can see how the public would say, well, we're not criminalizing people because we're not charging them for arrestable offenses. That might make sense to EPD, to attorneys, but it doesn't really make sense to the public and it surely does not make sense to the people who are being, receiving the punishment. So the impact is the same regardless of how, which level of infraction they're being cited with. And so that's why I think framing it using that thinking is not very productive in the debate. And EPD received that and said, yeah, that's something we understand here in the shop, but not out in the community. So I don't think it really helps us move forward in terms of focusing resources on problem-solving, which is ultimately what we're trying to do. And I think it's very helpful that there are people willing to help us understand the problem itself and dissect the problem itself and not get lost in the terms.
Counselor Sorette?
Yeah, well, I'm a home person, I think this is a really important topic. So I want to thank Counselor Evans and the Human Rights Commission for helping us come together today. I think you are helping us identify and seek some of the most difficult pieces we face in how a government, which is obviously what we are here, can address homelessness and the human rights obligations we have to help people in need, but working within limited resources, both financial and human resources, and a larger community landscape as it relates to what the general public expects from us in terms of supporting people in need and setting expectations for how our laws are followed and enforced. So it's not an easy conversation and I want to acknowledge that. And then just a couple of other brief comments. I think, you know, we have made a significant effort to create more opportunities for temporary shelter, but we've been unable to expand those beyond a very small number of sites, due in part to the limited number of city-owned sites that we control, as well as very fierce anti-resident organizations when we've tried to ID additional sites. And I find this especially unfortunate given that reports from our current rest stop sites are mostly positive, not negative, in terms of the impact on nearby residents. And then lastly, I want to say I served on the Mayor's Opportunity Task Work on Homelessness. I think that was 2011. And I was part of a subcommittee that started to frame this issue for council consideration around criminalization and disproportional impacts of certain ordinances on people who had no shelter. And we didn't have a community court in development at that time. And I also think our social service system is working in an even more collaborative way now than they were then. So I think we could find a way to look at some of the ways in which we enforce our ordinances that disproportionately impact those without shelter so they are not sent down a path to fines and jail, but instead supported in accessing social services and other means to move them from living on the street to permanent housing. I don't have the answer to how that happens, but just as we created a citation court, fine, jail system, in theory, we could create a parallel system that doesn't lead to fine and jail for those who have no options other than to live their lives in public. So this is an area I feel we could really use some technical support from organizations or other jurisdictions who have experience with that kind of effort.
Thank you. And I, Counselor Taylor, I'm going to call Counselor Taylor because she hasn't had a chance to say anything yet. Counselor Taylor?
Thank you. When you talk about barriers, I think the same things that lead to homelessness can be barriers. For example, if a person cannot afford to pay a utility bill, sometimes that leads to not being able to keep shelter. Then if you want to get, rent a new place and you have that huge debt in your background, that is a barrier. Sometimes it's a barrier that you cannot surmount. Also, people who don't pay their parking fines, I don't know why they get them, but if they don't pay their parking fines and they mount-- don't pay their parking fines and they mount up and a collection agency goes after them and it's a huge bill, once again, you have that big debt on your record. And if you're trying to rent a place, debts make a difference. So I think that looking at the things that cause homelessness or that contribute to it can also prevent some of the barriers to getting a home again. That's all I have to say right now. Thank you.
Counselor Brown, you ready to say something now?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to, I don't want to make a big deal of this, but since we are talking about this, I just want to add something to what Jennifer just said. Homeless people can be, there is an area that I know of because I'm personally familiar with it via my business. People can be arrested for criminal trespass. All a business owner has to do is sign a letter giving the EPD permission to arrest anybody on their property at any time. It has to be filed at the police station. So some of the scenarios that have happened, and I'm aware of one at my own business, some people were, you know, a homeless person, let's say, or somebody else who's down and out, maybe not homeless, can be digging through somebody's dumpster looking for food on the premises of a business that has signed a letter, and it's called criminal trespass. And that's a jail joke. You can go to jail for that. So this is one specific instance of criminalization of homelessness. And I don't want to take it up now, but I just wanted to mention that because I've heard talk that we don't criminalize homeless people. Well, actually, we do in this one instance, and there may be others that I'm not aware of. So I just wanted to point that out. And I really like what Counselor Syrah had to say. I think that needs to be added to the conversation. And I think perhaps Judge Allen could be part of this subcommittee that I'll be proposing on Monday in the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Ken.
One of the ways in which you could reduce people's vulnerability to citation and arrest obviously is to lift the camping ban. And that's probably the most controversial of the proposals that we make. However, there are other things that also protect people from that vulnerability to citation and arrest. The shelter and housing projects that you're describing, insofar as they give people a place that's safe and legal to go, are very important to protecting them from being vulnerable to that. Day centers, which we proposed, where people have someplace to go during the day. The mission, for example, has people leave all day long. Where do they go? Where do they go in bad weather? How do they shelter themselves legally? So day centers are another thing I think is really important. We've also suggested that EPD work with social service providers even more than they are now, so that when an intervention is done by the police, perhaps it can end up in something other than a citation or an arrest. Perhaps it could end up in taking somebody to a social service agency where they can get the kinds of help and services that they need, so they never become vulnerable. Kahoots, we've suggested in here is another kind of possibility of having Kahoots work 24/7 and avoid using police time for a lot of the things that perhaps police have now called in on because Kahoots is not there much of the day or night. Crisis intervention training, we also suggested for all police, but focusing specifically on the kinds of problems that people who are homeless have, so that they can make a judgment. They make judgments all the time about what to do with somebody engaging in particular kinds of behavior. Does it make sense for them to cite or arrest somebody? Or does it make more sense for them to try to figure out where this person can go, where they might be protected or sheltered or assisted in some manner? And then the other thing that we, these are all protecting people who are vulnerable, okay, without changing any laws even. And then the last thing that we mentioned in here in our sheet was something that's more cleansing, that there are courts, and in the intergovernment agency, federal agency report called Searching for Solutions, they have a whole list of best practices that are alternatives to criminalization. They use the term criminalization. And one of them is a special court that would work with people to eliminate or cleanse their record of minor offenses, so that they could then be able to present themselves to employers or to landlords without having that vulture hanging around their neck, or whatever the phrase is supposed to be. These are all things that can help with the situation that's going on in other places. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, thank you. I'm totally oblivious to that thing.
It's practice.
Yeah. Thank you. I do need practice. Without changing any ordinances or anything else. But obviously, what it comes down to, it's certain ordinances that are going to have to be changed.
Counselor Clark?
Well, I was going to respond to Jennifer by saying that I'm familiar with the past work that's been done. What I was looking for was some direct suggestions that would rise to the level of the work that you guys have talked about and commissioned that we should consider with regard to specific policy changes. Now, I just heard Ken do that, and that's wonderful. Specifically around enforcement technique, as somebody who sits on the police commission, for me, that's a very helpful bit of information. We talk about that frequently at police commission. We talk about the manner of enforcement in a lot of different conversations around police policy. It seems to me as if a lot of the things that you've just suggested with regard to enforcement occur already based on the knowledge and the information that I get, but I'm hearing you say they need to happen more frequently, or they need to happen at a greater depth of opportunity. I will say that only slightly, just for a second here, my challenge, and I don't want to get buried in it either, but with the word criminalizing, ing, it's an active verb, and it says essentially that the council is currently doing something. My challenge with that is that there isn't anybody at this table who wants to give homeless folks a bad time, wants to harass them, wants to do things that make their world harder. There's nobody here that wants that. Fact is, I suggest there are a lot of us here who want to do something about it to the extent we can. And we want to help. So saying that makes it sound like, you know, we're not really interested in being a part of the solution. And I assure you, all of us are. So I would encourage you to talk more about, in the ways we have here today, in the language of the three points that are written, the things we can do and the steps we can take to make it easier on folks. And then this is the important part, while still maintaining what I mentioned earlier, equal provision of the law, that the law applies to everyone equally, the camping ban, for example. I get, I just happen to have this, I got it three days ago. There's a picture of our downtown parks under the covered area that is quite a mess, you know. And I get pictures like that from constituents probably at least once or twice a week from somebody who have, you know, this particular person got to work at 6:45 that morning, and the place was, you know, really, really bad in the middle of our downtown park, saying, hey, do something about this. People just cannot camp here because of its effect on them. So our job is to make sure that the law affects everybody equally. So when you say, okay, you can camp here, but you can't, that's a problem for us. I see the time. So I'm looking for creative solutions to that.
Counselor Zelenka?
Yeah, I was following up on that. And Ken, I was going to raise my hand and ask, there's all these lists of other solutions, but I haven't seen anything beyond just these ideas. I like these ideas. Other than lifting the camping ban, there's things like additional homeless day shelters, a specialty court collaboration between service providers and law enforcement, homeless crisis intervention training for EPD officers, Kahoots 24/7. Is there any more detail around that than what's this list of good ideas, like, you know, how would it work? Who would be in charge? How much would it cost? That kind of detail that allows us to go to the next level of implementation. And if there's not, how do we, do you have any suggestions about how do we get there? Is that something that the Human Rights Commission or the work group can work through to get some of those details?
Ken?
I'll turn it out to go over the three minutes. Actually, it says two now.
Are you through with your time, though, before?
Depends on what he says.
I'm not going to turn to him until you're done.
I'm done.
Well, I think an important answer to your question is, these are suggestions that are made by a federal agency, and they list things that are going on. One of the reasons we want to bring somebody in who is familiar with these kinds of alternatives to, quote, criminalization, is because they will have more knowledge of what's going on elsewhere around the country. And we certainly, as a commission, can research some of these things and bring in more information. But there are people who travel around and kind of know what's going on elsewhere would be very helpful to speak with. Just briefly on Mike's thing, we made a point of saying in here that the barriers can be outcomes of inadvertent or unintentional kinds of policies. I wasn't here when the camping ban was set up. I don't know why it was set up in the first place. But in the interim, we've had a tremendous increase in the numbers of people who are homeless and therefore made vulnerable to that camping ban. Now, maybe it was never set up in the first place because people wanted to get homeless people. But the fact that it's continued as a policy, and more and more people have become subject to it and cited and arrested because of it, doesn't make you guys look bad. It's an example of a policy that is having a disproportionate negative impact on a certain segment of the population, which it may never have been intended to do. So this isn't about blaming particular individuals. This is about looking at the system and how does the system get altered so this is not going on.
So I've got Counselor Evans, and I know the city manager has something he wants to say as well. And then I want to make comments about the other two items, because I think we sort of dipped into those as we've gone along. So I'll try to wrap it up and tell you how we're going to move from here. Counselor Evans?
Yeah, Mayor, I kind of wanted to move into the second item a little bit and kind of talk about interjurisdictional cooperation and how we can better work together. I've had some conversations with Jack Tripp over at the mission and with Pat Walsh, who's part of, I think is chairing, our Poverty and Homelessness Commission, you know, about the issue of case management and how we can do a better job of putting together the resources that currently exist, the different programs that are out there that touch different segments of the homeless population, and begin to have a more comprehensive global approach to case management of individual homeless people that will get them from the place that they are to more stable, permanent housing and employment, and also to deal with some of the issues that they may be facing with. You know, some people have gun wellness, some people have alcohol and drug issues, that we can actually have a different way of being able to take all of those pieces and work with individuals, individual families, and other folks to be able to move them progressively out of that state and into a more stable environment, a more productive environment, and help them, to empower them to move their lives forward. And so, you know, I'm really interested in how we can develop a, you know, a more strategic, comprehensive approach to this, utilizing the agencies, the programs, and the resources that are already in play, and looking at things maybe in a different fashion of how we approach the issue. Because the ultimate issue is for us to help the people who are in need and to move them from where they are to where they get to a point of freedom and self-sufficiency and back into the mainstream of our community.
John?
Yeah, I just want to follow up on Ken's comment about research and whether it'd be helpful if you know what cities have used the National Law Center to do this similar kind of work, that we could contact them and see if they'd come in and have this conversation. We can do a little bit of research.
So I will be tomorrow spending the day in Portland at the West Coast Mayor's Conference with the mayor of LA, San Francisco, Seattle, and Portland. And the folks that you mentioned will be there, including his secretary. So there will be opportunities to have some contact at least. And I've been on the phone with them in our check-ins on ending homelessness for vets too, so some of those same people. It strikes me that what we actually need is a shared sort of comprehensive look at what's already happening, because a lot of things on that list are already happening at some level. So being able to see what we got and then seeing what's missing, or how we could do it differently, as you proposed, and we have to be respectful of the fact that we're not the one entity in charge of all of this. In fact, we're not a social service provider, but we can convene, and we can be part of a, I think all of you have alluded to a larger, more comprehensive discussion. And as I said, I think everybody's ready for that. I think there's so, and I think Jennifer said that too, there's so much interest, so many things going on in so many places. Just this morning, I'm hearing how the mission is willing to make a piece of a building they have available to homeless families on cold nights. So there's a whole new, they're just pieces all over the place. And I think it's hard for us to know what we have and what we don't have until we get it all, have shared information. And then you've got to figure out that, yes, that's great for when it's freezing. It's not so great for the rest of the time. So there's that piece, that piece too. In terms of what we are going to be talking about, and I think we've talked about a lot of it, but number two was about working with other jurisdictions to provide safe and legal places. And unless some counselor tells me that we're not interested in that, we have long been interested in that. And so that's part of the work that we are already doing. And then I would like to know if anybody needs more information on what a Housing First model is before we, you need that, Mike?
Just in terms of the context of what it means here. What do you mean by that in its direct application?
Okay, so we need to, if we can, get that information to them the next couple. There's plenty of it. And mostly, in the context that we're using it here, it means housing for chronically homeless people that is low barrier, meaning that you will get them into a roof over their head even while they're still using or getting over some of the issues that they have that prevent them from getting into housing. Yes, Jennifer?
And I've asked Susan Bann of Shelter Care and Jacob Fox of HACSA to also give me some of that information, because they're actually working on those definitions. And Susan can actually offer you a diagram that shows you what that looks like, because they actually have Housing First programs that they're using. What's the shift is moving away from saying to folks, you need to be ready for housing, and instead providing them supported housing that helps them stay in housing. So they're getting services and shelter simultaneously.
If it's not Housing First, if it doesn't come with support services.
May I clarify, Mayor? I did know that part. What I meant was, when you use words like "we," does that mean the city is going to pay for that for everyone who asks for it?
I don't know that the city's going to pay for any of it.
There we go. That's what I'm looking for, the specifics as it applies here locally. We're committing to it. What is it we're committing to doing is what I'm looking for.
So I think what we're talking about is saying that we see that as the model that we are looking to use as a community.
So we're speaking for the county and the?
All of us. Everybody across all the governmental entities. They pretty much do it already. We just haven't called it out.
Never articulated.
That's right.
But it's not assuming money.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah. Jennifer, that's my understanding of Housing First, but when I read this attachment B, the fourth bullet on the top of the page, Housing is not contingent on compliance with services. Then it goes on to talk about case management, supportive services. Housing First typically includes case management, coordinating, Housing First typically includes case management and coordinating services. My understanding is, it’s not, you’ve got to be ready, then we’ll give you housing. It’s get you the housing, and then we’ll give you the services. But it’s not that they’re not contingent, that if you do get the housing, you’ve got to do this case management and participate in the services. And a question I had, and I have another question, was related to, well, what if you get the housing first and then you just blow off all the services? My understanding, working in this field for 25 years, is that those people that are case managed stay in housing at a much, much, much higher rate than people who don’t. And I guess the question would be, do we require that? Because this non-contingent threw me off a little bit. I thought they had to, they went hand in hand, but Housing First, then the services, but you’ve got to stay in the program. Is that the understanding about what people believe is Housing First?
Mayor, could I get in the queue?
Yes. Want to say something right now?
I have another question.
Sure. Go ahead.
Okay. So, to address what Counselor Zelenka was just saying, my understanding is that a pure Housing First model would not require a person receiving the housing to participate in any kind of program. But that’s part of the point, is that you shelter them regardless. It is true that folks who get that kind of housing and access services then do much better than folks who don’t access the wraparound services, but the idea is to get them off the street. So, that is a different framework. And in terms of Counselor Clark’s concern that we might be dictating to other jurisdictions how we go about doing some of this work, I understand that concern, having served on the Human Services Commission for many years now, which is an intergovernmental body with Lane County, City of Springfield, and the City of Eugene. And so, you know, that would be a conversation that we had, but if the City of Eugene came to that table and said, “We have a, as the city have affirmed our commitment to pursuing this model as a best practice, then we can have that discussion at the Human Services Commission and see how that fits into the overall framework of the work being done there.” So, we wouldn’t be dictating to social service providers by ourselves. We would be working collaboratively through that partnership and the others that we have to try to bring some emphasis around Housing First as opposed to some other models that might be out there.
Okay. Counselor Zelenka, did you have something?
Well, so, I like Housing First, and I support it, and I’ll support the resolution. But practically speaking, we’re so underfunded in all this stuff. We’re dramatically underfunded in all this stuff. So, we’re going to have a small pool of money to be able to work through these things. And we want to make sure it’s as effective as possible. So, I don’t understand why we would create a policy that would say, put our funding into Housing First and then not have people do a personal commitment to have the case management and the coordinated services and follow through on those. If we were going to choose between two people who were going to be in the Housing First model, and one person said, “Yeah, I’ll commit to doing that,” and one person said, “No,” I mean, who would you give the Housing First to?
I’m going to call on Counselor Clark in a minute. But what I want to say to that is, that’s what we’ve been saying. And so, we’ve had a lot of expensive people out on our streets. You’re paying for them already. You’re paying for them in their impact on your public property. You’re paying for them on your livability of your community. You’re paying for them in public safety, and you’re paying for them in emergency services. You’re already paying. What Housing First has found out is if you take those same people, put them in shelter, offer them some support services, which they can take or not take, but if you do it, what you do is reduce your costs of those clients to your public by thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars. So, in a sense, it doesn’t matter if you approve of them or you don’t approve of them. What I will say is, if you have compassion, that works for you. If you want your community to not have people out on the streets, that works for you. If you want to save money, that works for you. That’s why everybody’s so focused as a best practice on the Housing First model, because no matter who you are, you will benefit by these folks who struggle so much with their lives, being off the streets, in shelter, and costing their lives less and costing us less. That’s how it works. Counselor Clark?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree just fine with the idea that we should be supportive of a Housing First model from the way I understand it. And parenthetically, I will tell you that I’m a firm believer in the starfish theory, that you may not be able to save all of them, but you can save this one, and by golly, that’s worth doing. I’m for that, and for making that effort. What concerns me is, I would hate to see us talk about our commitment to an idea as if it were a significant dent in housing people. I’m fine if we do it this way instead. But my questions around local implementation and how we work in coordination with other jurisdictions and agencies is, that’s fine if that’s their preference for first way to go, I’m happy to go with that, too. I’d just like to see us doing more innovative things in cooperation with those folks on a different kind of scale. We do a lot of little things, a lot of them all over, but we’re not making a significant enough dent yet. One of the issues that I asked about, oh, golly, it’s been two years now, I think, year and a half at least, when we first started having conversations about rest stops and Opportunity Village, was the idea of us acting, as you had mentioned previously, as a central clearinghouse of where information and opportunities exist. This is one of the things that I was assured the staff was working on, and there would be a plan, and I, there’s a member of the community, and I saw her earlier, I don’t see her just at this moment, who’s reminded me on several occasions that I should, in fact, ask staff for follow-up on this, and so, that’s what I’m doing. I think that’s our strength. Our strength isn’t to pay for everything. Our strength is to act as the clearinghouse of information where people can be served. And I think we ought to do more of it. And I guess I would ask the manager if there’s anything he would want to add in that regard.
I’ll find out the status of that.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Counselor Taylor?
I just wanted to follow up on what Ellen said. I think that people who have housing are nearly as likely to need any social services. So, that’s all.
So, I would just, I’m not wanting to put anybody on the spot, but I would just like to go, I feel like I want to go around and ask if any of the folks in the Human Rights Commission have any comments they want to make before we close the meeting down. Andrew, you got anything?
Well, I would just like to say thank you. I really appreciated hearing the comments from the counselors and the other commissioners on this subject, and, you know, I think there’s a lot of room for us to go forward, and I think this has been a productive discussion so far. I think, you know, speaking to some of the more information we need, I think that’s why it’s important that we do get outside experts to come in and look at some of the policies that are on the books and see, you know, where we can maybe possibly make some changes and get some additional information about those. And hopefully, that would suggest some means to move forward with this. And then, I guess, lastly, just, I wanted to invite you all to the celebration of International Human Rights Day, which is taking place tomorrow evening from 6:00 to 8:00 at First Christian Church. The topic will be on homelessness, so if you have the opportunity, come join us there. You’ll have some more information about that stuff there. So, yeah, just thanks again for your time.
Sorry, I won’t be in town.
I just wanted to say, you know, I feel like I’ve been quiet, but I purposely wanted to defer time to our experts in the room on our Human Rights Commission, since we had a limited amount of time with you guys. But I really appreciate the council listening to our experts, and like Jen said earlier, I hope that’s an opening to a conversation, not the only conversation we’ll have. You know, it’s a very complex subject that expands from, you know, just terminology discussions all the way down to nitty-gritty nuts and bolts of accomplishing a difference, and as well as big ideological ideas like the Housing First model. So, we’ve got everything in between, and it’s difficult to take that first step. But I think we’ve already done that by opening up this conversation. So, I really, from the bottom of my heart, thank you guys for doing that.
Ken?
Yeah, I just want to second the round of thanks that go around. I think coming out of this conversation, there’s a lot to be heartened with. First of all, I think to every counselor in the room, there’s unanimous agreement that there is room for improvement and room for work. And so, from there, we’re at an outstanding starting point that many cities can’t say that they are at. And so, for that, I have a lot of gratitude. I’d also like to recognize that Chief Kearns has been in the room for this whole conversation. Oftentimes, you’d have your chief of police send a delegate to listen and report back, and he’s been here all afternoon listening to this conversation. So, I think that that’s really impressive and deserving of our thanks and appreciation as a testament to what EPD’s commitment is, is to working with both council and the Human Rights Commission. So, I think that that’s great as well. I would just encourage that as we continue to have these conversations, to remember that, you know, there’s nuance, and this isn’t a zero-sum game. As counselors Pryor and Clark have talked about, behavioral impacts, and, you know, just because, you know, I think we all agree that we don’t want people urinating and defecating in our streets and alleyways or leaving trash around. And we also don’t want people being arrested, or not arrested, but cited because they need to do that. And so, what can we do in that middle ground in order to facilitate those behaviors that they’re able to do it in a safe and constructive way, just like all the rest of us are fortunate enough to be able to do, without having tremendous impact? And I’d also encourage creativity as we think about these solutions. There’s a lot of good work being done now. There are other things that perhaps we can do. I have some ideas I’m cooking on a little bit that I might choose to share at some point that might scare some, but that we could do, that could generate funding sources and opportunities for us to continue to move this ball forward in a way that’s respectful and constructive. And so, I just appreciate that this is how we started that conversation, that we’re all on the same page, and I look forward to us continuing to work together. Thank you.
Ani?
Well, I would just share everything that Andrew and Chris and Edward just said, and I want to thank everyone again. Thank you, Greg, and the city council, and the mayor, city staff, for pulling this joint work session together. I especially share what Chris had to say, because I did stay quiet, because Jennifer and Ken are really are two experts here. But I would reiterate, I think that the value of bringing in some outside voices, maybe from the National Center on Homelessness, not only to help us look at our policies here in this city, but to be able to share what they’re seeing working in other places that might dovetail well with what, you know, is already happening here. Thank you to all the city councilors for all the work that you have done up to this point. I want to, you know, recognize that, that there is a lot going on, but there’s just so much to do. I came into this meeting thinking, you know, every night I go to bed, and I put my head on my pillow, and I pull my covers up, and I think about how fortunate I am to be able to do that and to have these walls from my home help me feel safe at night. And, you know, and I also think about how many people, you know, well over 1,000 in our own city that don’t have that good fortune, and, you know, in the state and across the country. And that they, in addition to not having that comfort and that safety, also are often penalized for doing what every human being has to do unless they’re dead. And these are life and death situations. It’s survival, and I really appreciate that we do have the kind of city, that we live in the kind of city we live in. We have the kind of council that cares about these issues and cares about the people. We have a Human Rights Commission. We have a chief of police that, you know, cares enough to put his time into this. So, thank you all, and I hope that they’re, you know, that we keep these people in the forefront of our minds and not the people who are suffering from, you know, living like this, and not get sidetracked on, you know, terminology or anything else. We want to know, we know what the effect is. We know what some of the solutions are. We have access to, you know, some of the experts. I forget what you call them, but I really like that.
Certified smart people.
Certified smart people. Yeah, so, I’m all for that, you know, bring them in. Thank you.
Ken?
I’d like to also reiterate the thanks to the council. I volunteer at the Eagan Warming Center when it’s open, and I volunteer at Occupy Medical every Sunday. And my vision is that those will no longer exist because we won’t need them. And that’s what I think we should be working toward. So, I thank you for helping us move this forward a little bit.
Jennifer?
I just wanted to offer whatever resources you need between now and Monday as you’re contemplating these motions, we’re available to help. If there’s questions you have, the people we’ve been consulting are responding very quickly. So, don’t hesitate to contact us and ask for any sort of support or information that you need. Also, I wanted to point out that at the International Human Rights Day celebration at First Christian Church, it’s from 6:00 to 8:00, and we are actually honoring Occupy Medical for the human rights work that they do every Sunday in our park.
And Deborah?
Deborah? Yeah, not much I can add here, other than a great deal of thanks and appreciation for your willingness to hold the space, have the space, for people who’ve attended out of their busy days and the public to come to this and engage in a topic that’s not easy for many of us on many levels to think about, and for a variety of reasons why, and to go and do that hard work there and create the space for it, and by doing so with all of us, emulating the idea of community that I think we all want to have here in Eugene. Anybody? Chris, did you have something?
No, I’m fine.
So, I just, I guess the wine is up, and this is just to help you think. We’ve had many people in our community doing many wonderful things. My greatest fear, honestly, right now, I have great appreciation for all the work that people have done, many things, all of that, but I don’t want anybody to think that these Band-Aids are a solution. And that’s my biggest concern, that we get so comfortable with the Band-Aids that we forget that the wound is still there. And so, I hope that as we move forward to bring people together, we’ll really think about, seriously about Housing First, the shelters, the things that will make it so that people actually are in places that have plumbing and electricity and same kind of quality of light that the rest of us would expect, and that we aim toward moving people through that and into being on their own, as we all would like to be. And not, all of this is good because we don’t have anything else. A Band-Aid’s good if you don’t have anything else, but it’s better if the wound is fixed. And so, I really, I think this is the moment. I think this is the moment for that big thinking and that big push. I told the governor that we have the second-largest city in the state of Oregon, and we don’t have a public shelter. And she said, “You don’t have a public shelter?” And I said, “No, we don’t have a public shelter.” They were astounded. So, I’m just saying that from every place, there’s a lot of interest in us not settling for what is subsstandard for people in need, so, and with gratitude for what we do have and all the people who put in the huge efforts that they put in. So, with that, I’m going to close the meeting, and thank you all very, very much for being here.